All right, if we could start out with a roll call.
Alderman Geenan, absent.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Spaghetti.
President.
Alderman Talonair.
Here.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Mayor Tombs.
Here.
If you have a quorum.
Thank you. Do the pledge allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number five.
Minutes of the June 25, 2018 meeting.
Move to approve the minutes as printed.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Item six.
Minutes of the executive session of June 25, 2018.
Move to approve the executive session minutes.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item seven, update. A couple items. Starlight Review, Lincoln Park, and the city's park and recreation department will continue its concert series this Thursday, July 10, 2018, with musical act, "Miltown." Dance lessons will start at 6:30 PM with the concert at 7 PM. Hy-Vee Grill will provide food and drink for purchase starting at 5 PM. For event status, please call 309-732-7246 in case of inclement weather. By the way, I was just up at Lincoln Park today. A little side note, some beautiful art up there, right by the Genesius stage up there. They were installing it at noon today, so it's a nice, large piece. It's interesting to see. Ready, set, kindergarten. The downtown Rock Island Library will hold fun and free activities for your children to prepare and ready themselves for kindergarten for the 2018-2019 school year. The event takes place Thursday, July 12, 2018, from 3 PM to 6 PM at 401 19th Street. Swing for Kids Golf Event. The City of Rock Island Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting a two-club best ball tournament on Thursday, July 26, 2018, with registration beginning at 3 PM and tee-off at 4:30 PM at Saki Golf Course. The cost is $65 per person, and that includes 10 holes of golf, cart, drink tickets, goodie bag, and meal. Proceeds go toward the scholarship for youth and playground equipment for the city facilities. You can register by July 23, 2018 I've played in this myself last year. It's a lot of fun. You only get like three or four clubs. You don't get to pick too many clubs, and it's an interesting round. So, please enjoy it. And that's it for the updates. Item number eight.
Claims, A and B. A, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $18,467.80 to David Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois, for legal services rendered from May 7, 2018 through June 28, 2018. And B, report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $3,850.91 to Servpro of Davenport, Iowa for general liability claim.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payments recommended for claims items A and B.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried. Claims, items C through G. C, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number nine in the amount of $373,139.13 to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa, for the Outfall 7 relocation project for services provided from April 1, 2018 through April 30, 2018. D, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number seven in the amount of $17,800 to Green Space Associates of Davenport, Iowa, for the 2017-18 sod replacement program for services provided from April 13, 2018 through June 18, 2018. E, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number nine in the amount of $940,972.92 to Civil Constructors Incorporated of East Moline, Illinois, for the water filtration facility project for services provided from May 27, 2018 through June 21, 2018. F, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment number one in the amount of $75,012 to Valley Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, for the Third Avenue Water Main Extension at 24th Street Project for services provided from March 21, 2018 through May 25, 2018. And G, report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $14,466.89 to Valley Construction of Rock Island, Illinois, for an emergency sewer repair at 1541 24th Street.
Move to accept the reports and authorize payment as recommended for claims items C through G.
Second. Moved in second, is there any discussion?
I will be recusing myself from this vote due to the nature of my employment.
All right. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item number nine.
Claims for the weeks of June 22 through June 28 in the amount of $335,173.99 in June 29 through July 5 in the amount of $1,655,549. And payroll for the weeks of June 18 through July 1 in the amount of $1,536,112.33.
Move to allow the claims and payroll?
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 10.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for the Southwest Industrial Park rail line repairs, recommending the bid be awarded to Craft and Railroad Company of Andalusia, Illinois, in the amount of $179,719.
Motion to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract document.
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 11.
Report from the Police Department regarding a one-year contract with the Rock Island Myland School District for the services of the school resource officer for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion to approve the contract as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract document.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
I'll be abstaining from 11 and 12 due to the nature of my employment. But I would like to say that the chief has done a really good job of choosing the officers that fit so well in the schools. So, that has went very well, and it's wonderful working with those guys up there.
Good deal. Thank you, good cooperation between the two. Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 12.
Report from the Police Department regarding a one-year contract with the Rock Island Myland School District for the services of the high school resource officer for the 2018-2019 school year.
Motion to approve the contract as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 13.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the 2018 Brick Street Repair Program, recommending extension of the 2017 Brick Street Repair Program, maintenance contract with Centennial Contractors of the Quad Cities Incorporated of Moline, Illinois, in order to perform the required maintenance through 2018.
Move to approve the contract extension as recommended?
Second. Moved in second, any discussion?
I will also be recusing myself from this vote as well.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 14.
Report from the City Attorney regarding an ordinance providing for and regulation of small wireless facilities in the City of Rock Island in a master pole attachment agreement and proposed application form.
Motion to consider suspend rules, pass the ordinance, and approve the use of pole attachment agreement and application form as recommended.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion?
Thank you. I've kind of chirped about this a bit over the past several months, so... Unfortunately, the governor didn't agree with us on our resolution to veto the piece of state legislation that required this, but I appreciate our staff's prompt response to it. Thank you.
Yeah, roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item 15.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance approving the City of Rock Island, Illinois, Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Plan, Century Woods Tax Increment Financing District.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance?
Second. Moved in second, is there any discussion?
I just wanted to mention that on the agenda, starting with this item number 15, we have six ordinances in a row that all pertain to the tax increment financing. And I just wanted the audience and the people at home to realize that because it's going to sound repetitious in a way when we go through all six of them.
Okay. That, we can have a roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item 16.
Yes, suspending the rules, you need supermajority.
Supermajority, yeah.
Now, the super... I guess Dave's not here, so I figure...
Dave is on scheduled vacation. There was nothing, I missed nothing of this, but...
So, do we need to redo the motion?
You can do the motion. Well, I guess, I don't know. Can you do a motion to do the same thing without suspending the rules?
You could do a motion to consider. You wouldn't be able to have, if they're not going to have a supermajority, you can't suspend the rules and pass the ordinance without five votes. You could do a motion to consider it as a reading and then bring it back for another reading, which would not require a supermajority vote.
Okay.
Randy, are you aware of this causing any significant impact towards Millenia and their timeline? If we have to wait till the next meeting to get final approval?
I'm not. Chandler, is it? No.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, they want to get started, but if they got an initial approval here, they'd go ahead and get their ducks in a row.
Okay, thank you.
So, how do you need me to do this, Dave?
Say the same thing, except without the suspending rules.
Move to consider.
Move to consider and pass the ordinance.
Second. Moved in second. Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Yes.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Okay. Item 16.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance designating the proposed Century Woods Tax Increment Financing District pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act.
Move to consider and pass the ordinance?
Second. Moved in second, is there any discussion on this?
If you could rephrase the motion, a motion to consider, because we won't be voting to pass it. You'd have to suspend the rules to pass it today. So, a motion to consider, yeah.
Motion to consider the ordinance?
Yes.
Move to consider the ordinance.
Moved in second, okay, roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item 7.
Excuse me, point of information, City Attorney.
Yeah.
Does this mean the work cannot start, or the work can start immediately?
I would be of the opinion that the work could not start until it was actually passed, and so it'll have to come back for one more reading. A typical situation would be, the exception is to suspend the rules and pass the ordinance if you want to do it all in one fell swoop. But in this case, which you need a supermajority, which would be five out of seven votes. In this case, you can move to consider the ordinance, and then it'll come back, and it'll come back at the next meeting. And then, it only requires four votes.
I guess in five years, I've never asked this question. But quorum is six, we have six people.
Right.
But it has to go from, we have to deal with it from the seven.
Is that what you're talking about? Right, yes, it is a supermajority of the entire council, not just a supermajority of...
Those present.
Those present, that is correct, yes.
And, we're only voting here to create a TIF district. I mean, there's nothing in here that prohibits the purchaser of the property to go ahead and buy the property. We're not involved in any of that. The only thing that we're doing here is creating a TIF district. So, if Millenia Housing wants to go and buy, finish their purchase of the property tomorrow, that has nothing to do with what we're doing here.
I agree with you there.
Correct.
Okay, next question. Can the mayor vote?
No, only to break a tie.
Only to break a tie.
Yeah, only to break a tie.
Thank you.
Yes. I thought of that also.
I was going to ask.
Just one more vote, and you would be able to.
I said, say, one person... Same results.
Yeah.
Item 18.
Uh, 17.
I thought we... Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, 17.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Century Woods Tax Increment Financing District.
Move to consider the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second. You'll get it right. Is there any other discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
The next three items on the agenda are all on Heather Ridge.
Mm-hmm.
Can we combine them, or not?
No, we'll do them just individually here because they're posted in the itinerary.
Right, my understanding from Kathy Orr, who is our TIF attorney, is that they want us to do them individually in the order in which they appear. That's not my area of expertise, but that was the way she explained it to me, and I think that's the only, one of the only things she does. But I do appreciate, obviously, you're just trying to move things along if we can. We'll take her word for it.
Yep. 18.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance approving the City of Rock Island, Illinois, Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Plan, Heather Ridge Tax Increment Financing District.
Move to consider the ordinance?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item 19.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance designating the proposed Heather Ridge Tax Increment Financing District pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act.
Move to consider the ordinance?
Second. Moved in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an ordinance adopting tax increment allocation financing for the Heather Ridge Tax Increment Financing District.
Move to consider the ordinance?
Second. Moved in second, any discussion?
I would like to comment at this point, as we are in the final of these considerations, that, you know, Millenia Housing came to this community with expertise from around the country in doing exactly what they're trying to do to better the conditions of Century Woods and Heather Ridge. I appreciate them coming to our city in looking at the amount of money that they are planning to move forward on in rehabbing and getting new appliances and beautifying these places for the residents. I think it's going to be a huge boost for them. I think it's going to be a boost for our community. You know, they have figured out in their business model how to use a pretty tight TIF that doesn't expand for miles and miles and string along roads. That doesn't make any sense. It's around one property for one purpose. You know, if there were other people, other businesses in the world that wanted to come in and put this kind of money up and this kind of investment into this property, they could have done it anytime. The fact of the matter is, they don't exist. These folks have an expertise. I remember when they first came to council to make a presentation. Prior to that, I had done some research to try to find were there problems with them in the past? And try as I did, I really couldn't find any sort of dirt, if you will. They seem to have a good reputation. They seem to really care about their product, and they seem to really care about making an impact in the lives of the people who live in the properties that they take over and enhance. So, I am all for this. I hope that at the next council meeting, the second vote prevails, and we can move forward with this massive investment in our community. That will ideally put local work to, people to work as well. So, that's always a good thing, too.
Thank you. Great.
I'd like to add to that. In the audience tonight, we have some of the people that live in these apartments or whatever, and they are grateful for what's going on. Hopefully, in the future, there will be other businesses, whether they're from the United States or overseas, that will look at what's happening in Rock Island, and they will want to invest in the City of Rock Island. Because as we all know sitting up here, we have people here living in Rock Island that have the amount of money that they could have did that. They did not do it. This is outside concern that I, correct me, Randy, if I'm wrong, this is approximately $66 million, the two projects. That's the greatest thing, I believe, that's ever happened in the City of Rock Island. If something better than that, I don't know about it.
So, we're all voting on this, and can anyone give me an estimate what the staff's point of view is on what it's going to cost the taxing bodies of Rock Island County, the city, the airport? All of the stakeholders on your property tax bill are all helping to fund this, like you said, a huge investment. And I just don't think you guys have squarely looked at how much this is actually, for 23 years, it's going to cost the property taxpayers of the City of Rock Island.
Clarification, it may not last 23 years because there's a set dollar amount that is that or the 23 years. So, whichever happens first.
And I read this in Mr. Mayor. Respectfully, I've never seen a dollar amount that it's going to project it over the next 20 years or 23 years or 18 years. I'll be dead before this. I'll be, the property taxpayers of the Rock Island County will still be paying for this, and I won't even be around, so...
The only thing is, is it's new dollars, and if we didn't do this project, any of these entities wouldn't see any more money.
Well, you know, you say that...
The property would have to go up in value for it to be taxed more or to pay more taxes, and at this point, it doesn't look like they're going to go up in value unless you do something with them.
Every property in Rock Island, when it is sold, the property taxes, in my view, increase. When you sell a property, the assessor comes in, and they reevaluate it, and sometimes they go down because in the crash of '08, you're right, the properties went down. But there's no reason to think that that's going to happen at this sale.[1526.39] But there's no reason to think that that's going to happen at this sale. They'll all be frozen at the old numbers. And it's just my opinion, it's my view and.
Appreciate that.
Yep. That's fair, just like Mr. Alderman Mayberry was saying, no one else was rushing to make these improvements to add those extra dollars that you're talking about.
What about the people that have been collecting rents for twenty years? They have been, and they have created the blight by not reinvesting and they're still going to own half of this deal going forward.
No, I think they'll be totally bought out, is my understanding.
That wasn't what I heard the man with the slick suit say.
Currently, that's right, but currently, I don't think they're there. But immaterial whether they own or not, you are correct, that the existing owners have not put money into it. That is correct and that's a crying shame, that anybody should be reinvesting in their properties and maintaining them. And that is a problem, but at this point, we can't control that and we can't force them to do that. And so, we need to continue to give people a better place to live.
I respectfully disagree, thank you.
Okay, that's fine, that's what we're all about, is respect.
We're ready for roll call? Please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
No.
Ship.
Aye.
Four ayes, two nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-one.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding an application from Charles and Valerie Keel to purchase city-owned property parcel zero-nine-five-zero-nine-two.
Motion to approve selling the city-owned property is recommended. Authorize staff to negotiate a sale price with the applicants and prepare a purchase agreement for council approval.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-two.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request from David Ostrom for rezoning from B-four Highway Intensive Business District to I-two General Industrial District at approximately forty-fourty-seventy-ninth Avenue West.
Motion to approve the request is recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second. Move to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There it is. Item twenty-three.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request for a handicap parking space at six-twelve Sixth Street.
Move to approve the request is recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item twenty-four.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Mark Betzel, from president of Hawkeye Ice Company, to change the parking restrictions in front of his business at thirteen-twenty-three and through thirteen-twenty-nine Second Avenue to one hour.
Move to approve the request is recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second. Move to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Twenty-five.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Robert Novaro to have no parking, standing, or stopping signs installed at each end of the alley, at thirty-fourth Street to Thirty-Fifth Street and Eighteenth Avenue to Twentieth Avenue.
Mayor, if I could interject, Mr. Novaro has asked if he could address the council very briefly before we make a motion to vote on this?
Do we do it before the motion or during the discussion?
If we could.
Okay.
Just to give us some insight, in case we need to modify the motion or stay the.
Probably the proper way to do it would be to go ahead and have the motion and open it up for discussion and then if you need to modify your motion, I'm sorry, that's cumbersome, but I think that's probably the appropriate way to do it.
Move to approve the request is recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? So, if you wish to come up, there you are.
Yeah, thank you.
If you could come up to the podium, if you don't mind, please. I think we'll need your name and city you live in.
My name is Robert Novaro, I live in Rock Island, eighteen thirty-four, thirty-four, eighteen fifty-three, Thirty-Fourth Street, Rock Island. When I first, I'll try to make this brief, when I first spoke to Mr. Ship, I told him we needed these signs for parking. What's going on is, the alley is half a block away from Washington Junior High School. And during the school year, there's so many parents dropping off their kids and picking up their kids, at the end of the day, they're using that alley like it's a main street and that alley is not built for that. And a lot of these parents are flying up and down that alley, parents and older siblings. I mean, I've seen some cars literally doing thirty, thirty-five miles an hour up that alley. We've got kids living in this block, we've got two daycares in this block. And so, when I spoke to Mr. Ship, he said, get a petition so we know you're not the only one that wants this. I wrote up this petition and I went to every house in the block and I've got thirty-two signatures of people that want this. The only houses that are not represented are four houses, two of them are empty and the other two, nobody answered the door. I went two or three times, nobody answered the door. Everybody I talked to signed this petition, including one insurance agent at the business there on, whatever that insurance is on Eighteenth Avenue. Pardon?
E.H. Schroeder.
Yes, thank you, yeah. One of the agents even signed it, she says, they, these people drive her crazy, too, using their parking lot, flying up and down it. And it's like these people with children, once they drop off their kids, they forget there's kids around and it's pretty crazy the way they drive. Now, in the petition, I asked for these no parking signs because a lot of the parents, at the end of the school day, they block the alley waiting for their kids. And what it is, is Thirty-Fourth Street is so jammed with all these cars that it's tough to use, so they like to use our alley so they can avoid the four-way stop at Thirty-Fifth Street, it would be. They don't like stopping at Thirty-Fifth, so they come up and down the alley and all that. I also requested something like no-through traffic, to stop, to hopefully, to slow, cut down on the amount of traffic going through the alley. Now, for some reason, the Traffic Engineering Committee ignored that. They didn't, they recommended the two no parking signs and if you agree to put those up, I will appreciate that and so will the other thirty-some people that sign this. We will appreciate that, but that only addresses half the problem and actually, it addresses the lesser of the two evils, so to speak. The speed, I mean, I'm amazed nobody's been hurt yet. We need something to either cut, and I know signs alone are not going to solve the problem, but if the parents see these signs, especially the parents that were driving up and down last year, they see new signs this year, they might get to thinking, okay, somebody's paying attention, somebody's making some complaints or something and it might cut down on the traffic or, you know, we need something. If you can't give us a no-through traffic sign, maybe a speed limit sign, I had three different people say we need speed bumps in that alley and only one person said he don't want speed bumps. And I'm number four, I'd like speed bumps, if that's possible, or something, maybe a children playing or daycare, like I said, we got two daycares there. So, I mean, if you can give us those signs so they won't block the alley, but also give us something to hopefully cut down on the amount of traffic or at least cut down on the speed or something, I know we'd all appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Council have any else say?
Yeah, so I would like to, is Larry, are you here? Well, he's coming up, Josh, I'd like to thank you for doing my job.
Appreciate it.
Vote for me in April. Get the work.
So, in the past, I know we've had good working relationships with the school district, the safer routes to school, you know, engaging them about, you know, the through traffic. We just changed, put up some, the one-way signs.
Temporary one-way.
Temporary one-way, Mr. Spaghetti's ward. So, is there, are there other things that we can do to communicate with the staff at Washington Junior High about maybe getting a letter out to the parents? Do we, do we have, I can't think of any speed bumps in any alleys in the city. I don't know if we have.
Not purposely.
Yeah, I would say not intentionally, no.
Because I know Robert appreciates the signs and I think it's going to be a good first step, but like you said, I think we're still going to have a problem come, start of the school year next year.
Sure, and I agree, and like Mr. Novaro said, we can post all the signs we want all day long. It's getting the parents and the citizens to adhere to those signs, which that's going to require police presence, that's going to require enforcement from the police department, whether it's speeding through the alley, whether it's continuing to block the ends of the alleyways, that's just going to require an additional presence from law enforcement. We're happy to talk with the school district and see if they can't put out some type of letter to the parents at the beginning of the school year, halfway through as a reminder and again towards the end, you know, that, hey, you know, there are residences in this area, please be mindful that there are kids, there are daycares. We'll be happy to do that, but we felt putting the no parking, no stopping, no standing as the initial measure. I don't, I'm not aware of any speed limit signs in alleyways, I know there's an ordinance for it specifically, but again, you can post all the signs you want, so we need to increase enforcement to start with, to hopefully be the biggest deterrent and then obviously, stop the blocking at each end and then speak with the school district as well.
And the alleyway speed limit is at fifteen miles per hour?
I believe that is correct.
So, maybe that could be part of the letter, too, to encourage them. And I know we could work with the police chief as well to maybe coordinate something at the start of the school year to get the word out. You know, I think the thing is, is that this probably just hasn't, this hasn't really been addressed.
Correct.
And I appreciate Mr. Novaro bringing this to my attention.
Absolutely.
And as far as the other request to, you know, about the no-through traffic, I don't think that was necessarily ignored, I just don't think that we can put up signs to prohibit through traffic through alleys.
Correct.
So, that's why, you know, that wasn't.
I understand that, but if you help us in some other way.
Sure.
Sure, no, I agree.
And we will. We certainly will.
I have a question, and this is not something that the neighborhood necessarily wants, I'm just asking for my own information. Do we have any alleys designated as one-way? That you can think of?
Yes, we do, we do.
Behind Whitey's on Eighteenth Avenue.
That's right. That's right. So, that's a tool that could be used if the neighborhood wanted to do something like that.
Okay, and obviously, if we did that, we'd want to reach out to each one of the residences, the daycares, how much would that impact them if we made it one-way?
Sure.
And we'd be happy to do that as well.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
Sure, thank you.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Twenty-six.
Report from the Traffic Engineering Committee regarding a request from Gloria Streeter, Vice President of Streeter Corporation, to remove their parking lot at twenty-one-hundred-eighteenth Avenue from being under city ordinance control, section nine dash four-two.
Move to approve the request is recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Move to second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item twenty-seven.
Report from the mayor regarding reappointments to the Beautification Commission.
Move to approve the reappointments is recommended.
Second. Move to second, discussion?
Happy to see that we have folks who are looking, I think all four of these are reappointments.
They are.
For four more years and, you know, it's four more years. That's a good thing.
This is one of the larger boards that we have, is right now, it's fifteen people. There has been talk about trying to maybe reduce that number for the reason being is they have a tough time with attendance and it recalls, sometimes it calls for a majority, like we had here tonight, and they have a tough time making it, so we may try to reduce that number down to eleven, which is still one of the larger boards, but we're somewhere in there. But, that even be said, we are reappointing these four individuals. It, Roy Plasert, Mary Ann Cannell, Barbara Craver, and Emily Smith, I can say that one. So, that's the names. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Item twenty-eight.
Report from the city clerk regarding a Plaza event application from Steve's Old Time Tap for the Seventh Annual C.C.K.M.A. Car and Bike Show fundraiser on Sunday, August nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, from one PM to five PM with street closures of Seventeenth Street between Second Avenue and Third Avenue and Third Avenue between Seventeenth Street and Eighteenth Street with sound amplification, a waiver of the permit fee and the consumption of alcohol in the fenced-in area.
Move to approve the event as requests, or move to approve the event and requests as recommended, subject to complying with all Plaza and liquor license regulations and subject to being closed down early if complaints are received.
Second. Move to second, any discussion?
Yes, word says, complaints, how many complaints do you have to have to have something closed down? It's got an S on the end of it, so it means more than one. Is there a definite number or two? It's two enough?
Well, the complaint would go to the police department and they would respond and determine if there was an issue where it needed to be closed down.
Yeah, but I mean, would one complaint?
I think if they got a complaint, any complaint, they'd show up, I don't know, Chief, you can probably.
Well, then I think it should read complaint, not complaints, more than one.
I think they would try and evaluate the complaint first, probably try and get some compliance with the issues and if they responded back, then they would consider shutting it down.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays, motion carried.
Item twenty-nine. Any other business?
I wonder if the nature of the complaint was the event just wasn't a good time. It shut it down.
That was real boring.
I wonder how many of those it would take.
Exactly.
I just wanted to say very quickly that, expressing my gratitude to our city manager, Randy Tweet, and the mayor, and all the staff who showed up to the ward meeting and Alderman Mayberry for showing support coming out to the sixth ward. We're going to probably do another ward meeting tying into the Keystone Fall General Meeting at St. John's again and hopefully get some more people there. These new style of ward meetings, I think, are very successful in that we just need to get more people to come out, meet the staff, learn about what each department's doing. I think further is our goal of genuine engagement with the citizens and providing them with the means to understand what it is their local government does and who the people are who are doing it, so I thank you again for that support.
Pleasure. I'd just like to make a mention, I guess condolences and sympathy and prayers go out to the families, to the two gentlemen that lost their lives at the Rock Island County Courthouse in the lawn, the third of July, it was a very freak accident and unfortunate thing, so, but those things happen, so I just, I guess, bring that forth and condolences to the families. Anybody else have anything? All right, we have Deborah Jones.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I live at thirty-two-hundred-twenty-first Avenue. I have been there for twenty-three years. Our neighborhood was a beautiful neighborhood when we moved in. I have a neighbor that moved in approximately a year ago at twenty-one-fifteen Thirty-Second Street, he is directly south of me. Since he has been there, he has constructed a two-story shed that's not finished in his front yard. He has filled construction trailers on his property. He's running a construction business out of his home. He brings home large construction equipment on occasion. He stores construction materials and equipment on the east side of his shed. He puts a dumpster on the city easement every week. Multiple employees coming and going with construction trailers and utility trucks. Bricks are piled up on the west side of the shed, facing Thirty-Second Street. He has a non-operable Suburban on the south side of the shed. He drives over the curb with his trucks and trailers into the yard. Two hours after Friday, after I called City Inspections, he was home and he was cleaning up every single piece that I had complained about. I do have pictures and I do have descriptions, if you would like to see them. We are tired of this in our neighborhood. We've always had a very clean, decent, respectable neighborhood and now it's just my property values have went down, I'm sure my neighbors have too, due to all of this.
I think what we can do is if Chandler can come back there, he's got in charge of inspections and emails, you can give that information to him.
Okay.
And the pictures and whatever, and then they can follow through with that.
Okay, thank you very much.
And once again, you do not, if you, in the future, you don't have to come to city council to talk about this, you can call city hall.
I did call city inspections, but like I said, two hours after I called, he's out there cleaning. What does that sound like to you? I'm sorry, but, you know, and I don't like to complain, but we have to look at this every single day.
I understand, it's, those are problems and we appreciate it.
Yes, they are.
Just didn't feel you had to come here, you could take care of it on a daily basis or talk to your alderman.
I did talk to him this morning, thank you.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Nellie Jackson?
She couldn't get to take care of Steve? Had all day.
I can give you Josh's number.
All right, Nellie, is it Nellie Jackson? I guess she or he left. Evy White? Oh, rat of time, there's no time, oh. That's not nice, oh. Someone's got to pick on you. Charlie won't.
I would like to pass something out.
Sure. Could you bring the microphone down a little bit, please?
I think it needs to be.
Yeah.
I'm Evy White, I live at forty-oh-four Seventeenth Street, Rock Island. I love the piece of property where we're at now. It has lots of excitement, cars running into the yard, knocking down garage doors, all kinds of things. But right now, the reason why I'm here to talk is I want to talk about the debris, the dirt, the mud, and the trees that come from three different areas of the city and it's now, it's almost to my property, but not quite. Since it's three different places and you have easements on my property through my creek, you have a huge, big, I think it's probably a sewer thing underneath the creek. We have three manhole covers, they should be marked on what you have there. And then, like I said, the creek is absolutely beautiful, it's one of the reasons why we bought our property. We have two acres there, it's all wooded. When a tree on our property falls, and if it falls into the creek, Charlie and I cut it up and haul it away. If it's over across the creek on the other side, which we own, we leave it and let it go back to nature. I'm having a real problem, this now, Charlie has turned eighty-five, or will be eighty-five his next birthday, I will be seventy-nine my next birthday. It's getting harder and harder for us to clean up after people. We pick up all the garbage, you would be surprised what's out front of the house as people go by. We're out daily, I clean out all of the storm drains that are in front of my property, there are three of them. We do everything that we can to help the city. I was amazed that since there is an easement on my property for the creek, that the city says they can't help me clean up this mess that's there. But, if it gets so bad that it stops the flow of the water, they can demand that Charlie and I clean it up. It's not coming from my property, it's coming from Watch Hill, it's coming by the cemetery and then also underneath Seventeenth Street, there's a very large storm sewer that goes underneath Seventeenth Street, turns at my property and comes. Now, Charlie and I have kept that as cleaned out as we can. Most of it probably stops on the other side somewhere, I don't know where it's at, where it comes from, I just know it drains into my yard and, or into our end of the creek. So, I'm here to ask you, because I have been to staff twice and through my councilman and then through Ivory Clark, to ask them to come and look at it. This past week, one of the staff members did come and he was very polite, very polite. We both understood where the other one was coming from, but I didn't like his answer. So, that's the reason why I'm here. So that's the reason why I'm here, to you. Because to me, it doesn't make sense if you have an easement that you cannot help us clean it up. Thank you. Are there any questions of me? Can you understand our drawing and our pictures?
Very nice.
As you see, um, where we're at, our property is kept very clean and kept up out of the creek. But somebody isn't keeping their end of the creek, creek clean. And I know it's hard and probably next to impossible to police all the creeks that's here. But ours is huge. And it, during the storm, I think this year, it's the worst I've ever seen it. Um, and I'm sure it's because of the hard rains that we've had in the last month or so. So, is there any other questions of me?
Go ahead. Well, I appreciate your drawing, Evy. And I know that you and I talked about this about a year ago, and I called Public Works and the city manager about it at that time. Um, so I guess I'm asking if maybe Public Works Director wants to comment at all in terms of what the city's responsibility is or what we can do to help out. You might want to give him one of your drawings too.
Well, they took pictures, uh, the fellow took pictures yesterday, uh, or Friday, uh, Mr. Parr.
How are you?
So you're my enemy.
I'm not your enemy, I'm your friend of me, I'm your friend of me. Um, so I did speak with Andy Parr about this, Marissa. Um, and he did go out and he mentioned he met with Evy White on site. Uh, it's an unfortunate situation because of the way the ordinances are currently, that if you own the property with the creek that runs through it, your responsibility is to maintain the flow through that creek. Uh, the timber line that's within the property obviously falls within Mrs. White's, uh, responsibility. However, um, just sitting back here listening, kind of got me thinking, maybe we want to look at the Rite Act program because that's part of the drainage assistance program, will this qualify with some assistance on that? Um, check with the easements as far as where our utilities are and see if there's any other type of, I don't want to say go around the rules, but is there any way we can, I don't want to say circumvent either because that's not what I'm looking to do, but is there something that we can do to assist through one of our programs that we already offer that may qualify? Um, and so we'll be happy, like, the downside is because of the way the ordinance is, it, it is like she said, you know, she didn't like the answer because that's, that's what the ordinance is. Um, so we'll continue to work with Ms. White and, and see what we can do to assist.
I would really appreciate that. You're a friend.
Okay.
The reimbursement on the Rite Act program, is that seventy-five percent?
I believe it is seventy-five percent up to, I want to say it's three thousand dollars. But, you know, we can, we can look at that.
So what, I'm, I'm not sure I understand what would happen with that program.
Sure, the Rite Act program, what, it, it would require a contractor to come in, give a, give an estimate, give a bid as to what it would take to clear the debris, clean the creek out. Um, and then obviously, there's equipment that's going to come on the property. And then seventy-five percent of that, I mean, the whites would have to pay for it and the city would reimburse them up to seventy-five percent of what that total cost was. I believe it's up to the three thousand dollar mark.
And this sounds to me like a reoccurring problem, is that right, Evy?
Not, no, not like it has been, not like it is right now. Um, I think I talked to you last fall and there wasn't very much there. It was just big, heavy trees, it was whole trees. And now there's other stuff that's down on top of the trees. And, uh, one did float on down. And, um, we had some tree people in last week cutting some trees that was on our roof. And so they did look at and took care of a couple of those things. But like I said, this isn't on our property.
So I'm just wondering if the problem itself, whether it's on your property or not, because I realize there, there's a stream that comes through the area, um, or drainage ditch, whatever you call it, if that's something that needs to be looked at on an annual basis.
Wouldn't hurt my feelings any. But it's, um, it's a beautiful piece of property. Charlie and I will not give it up. Yeah, I mean, they're going to take us out of there feet first. Of course, I said that when I lived at ten thirty-two Twenty-first Street too, and guess what happened? So, you know, anything's possible. But, um, it's the wildlife, it's the beauty of it. Of course, it's basically, I'm surprised it didn't belong to Black Hawk State Park because that's what it looks like. And we are just one house from Black Hawk State Park. Any questions for me?
I have one for you, actually.
Thank you, Evy, appreciate that very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. White. If it's not on her property, why would she pay?
Well, because she owns a property in which the channel actually runs through, or the creek actually runs through, is on her property. And so you're responsible as a property owner to maintain the flow through, through that creek. Now, if it's free, if it's an issue that's further up.
It's further up.
We do walk the, all of the, the channels and the drainage ditches and the ravines in the city that had, that we have infrastructure through, uh, because we're obviously responsible to maintain access for our own infrastructure. If there's not any infrastructure through that particular ravine, it's not typical protocol for us to walk that ravine. That's up to the property owners.
But it's not on her property, I'm, I'm.
Where the, where the blockage is, I believe, is on your property, correct?
No, it's not.
It is not. Okay.
It's on your property or is it on the, you're on the easement, but you own the property that's eas, has easement on it?
No, it's, it's north of the property.
But it all, I would, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I would assume that all of the creeks and the properties that butt up to it have easements. I couldn't possibly be the only one who has an easement. Um, when we moved in, Public Works, which you weren't the director, or the assistant director.
Right.
But Public Works asked us to do a drive that comes down to north of our property, that is on our property. There's a drive that comes down and I was going to close that drive off. I was going to plant bushes across there and the city asked us to build it, so we did. So that a small pickup truck could get down there and get any kind of footwork, whatever they need, or the city could get down there. Since we have an easement, we certainly understood the easement because we could see the big storm sewer. And I didn't want that to have anything happen to that and not have the city living there.
Yep.
And I didn't want to ruin bushes if I put them up there. So we left that open. And, um, we put up on the sidewalls, and the city helped us with that. We put up on the sidewalls, um, bricks so that when it, when it rushes down, it, the dirt is saved, the walls of the thing is saved, um, so that there isn't more sediment falling into the creek. That is what we can think of to do to keep things open and full.
Sure. So Alderman Clark, to your, to your comment, I misunderstood, I thought the issue was on her property specifically. If it's not on your property, then that's, that's a whole nother issue that we need to address as a city and go in and look at the property where it's actually occurring. So that was my.
We'll have to check and see how close it is to my property, because some of it might be drifting down there now.
Okay.
Um, and I want it gone.
No, understood, understood.
Before it hits my property. Because we did, that brown thing you see at the top of one of the bridges, we did put a bridge over that. And, um, it's never had any problems. The water never rises that foot that far. I, I would assume that it's eight to ten-foot banks at our case. But it rises here a quarter foot if we had a hard enough rain.
So that was my misunderstanding, um, so we'll look further into it. Absolutely.
So Alderman Clark, um, the easement is for the storm sewer structure. There are no easements for the open drainage channels through properties.
Okay.
So the creeks that run through all the properties that are actually part of the stormwater conveyance system, that we don't have easements for those.
Right. So it.
You're telling me you don't have an easement on my property?
We do, but it's probably to get at that, uh, storm structure, not to the creek itself.
Yes, but it's in my creek.
I know, but it's a storm sewer that we're, that we're accessing, it's a sewer back there, not the creek itself.
Well, they say creek on my abstract.
Well, you may have had one, but I'm, throughout the city, there typically is not an easement just for the creek.
Well, I think sometimes there's not as big a creek as what I've got either.
Maybe, but I was answering Alderman Clark that throughout the, the city, there's a lot of open drainage channels and typically there is no easement for those.
Okay, and I don't mean to argue with you, I'm sorry.
No, it's, you're fine.
But, and I don't know if I greeted you all, and if I didn't, I'm sorry. Um, I'm a little nervous, I don't know why, I've been here before.
Been up here.
But anyway, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else, we have item number twenty-nine, or, excuse me, item number thirty.
Executive Session. Five ILCS, one-twenty, Section two, C five. The purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired.
Move to go into executive session for the exception cited.
Second.
Second, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Alderman Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Spaghetti.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Six Is, no Ns. Motion carried.